All right, let's go ahead and get our city council work session we're getting to order for this Monday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Uh, we're just gonna dive right in, guys. So on the agenda, the first item, uh, this is a review of a previous work session action item. And it is a D E Q update, and there is a minor one.
Well, we're represent, uh, um, Mayor Sheets was contacted by Representative Gonberg last week saying that he would be in town. And, uh, Mayor Sheetz said, thank you, and we'd like to meet with you. So, uh, we did, and, uh, we described our issue with the Department of Environmental Quality. And he said to write him a short letter, which give him a summary, and he would make a call, and he didn't feel that it was right either.
Nice.
This is related to the T M D L?
Yes, T M D L.
The fine.
Complaint and violation. And so you would, I would characterize it as he felt the same as we did, that it was not. Yeah, that it was not appropriate how it was done. And, um, so, uh, that letter has been sent on to his chief of staff, so we'll, we'll, we'll stay tuned.
Oh, that's awesome to have him on our side.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that was great of Mayor Sheets to, um, get him in and take care of it, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. That, that was good. And it's always nice, he got to visit the office and he was introduced to Don, and so that was. It's always nice to have a more of a presence than just at a meeting hall, so.
Awesome.
That was, that was very nice.
Okay, I think we can move on to new discussion. Um, first up is City Hall proposals, and I think we have some paperwork for that.
You have a, uh, you have a, you have a floor diagram of a twenty-four by sixty mobile office building. They sent me four proposals, essentially buying it outright, which would be about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Renting it, which is what this one is on a twelve months, twelve month ramp, that is extendable. And so you might be asking, could we have a longer lease? And because we're government and are based upon a twelve month, um, cycle. Um, the Sourcewell contract, which is a state of Oregon contract that goes along with this. Is twelve months with the option to extend.
And could they increase, I think you said they could increase the monthly rent after that first twelve months, right?
Um.
Theoretically, or maybe the interest rate would increase.
The extension, no, that we can extend up to another year without any other costs or anything going into effect.
Cool.
So basically up to two years for essentially three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month.
It looks like, uh, this quote expires twelve twenty-one.
Um, yes, but that's, that's just because they gave it to me on eleven twenty-one, or eleven twenty-six.
Got it.
All right.
Okay, so then we could probably negotiate that a little bit.
I would assume we can.
And the charges upon return is if we.
We do.
If we don't end up buying out the lease and doing financing it some other way.
Correct. So there is a, a return charge of twenty, that, that's basically a pick the whole thing up, remove everything and, and bring it back.
Got it.
Uh, to, to whence it came.
When?
So that's, the, the, they had another hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar buyout for the nineteen eighty-nine used version. But its monthly costs were two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and I didn't think that that, the extra three hundred dollars. Between a used version in nineteen eighty-nine, which would need attention, and a brand-new version, which we wouldn't have to mess with too much.
Right. Does the lease dictate like a residual cost if, to, if you wanted to buy it after lease?
There, there is. This contract is a twelve-month lease, and so if we wanted to move forward with it, I could find out what the residual is.
Okay.
I decided in, in terms of brevity and just getting us something that was concrete, this was probably the best.
Okay.
Since we had to work with the live, the S B C E A and get this information, but we, um, Zoe, the sales representative, I did discuss the residual and. That I said, but right now, for the sake of keeping your work, so you can get us the quote, let's work on a buy, uh, outright. And a lease for the one you have in stock currently, which is the eighty-nine, and the one that would be available April first.
And, and I'm sorry, so you said the difference between the eighty-nine, which is thirty-five years old, and the new one is only three hundred dollars a month?
Month and rent, yes.
It makes sense to get a new one.
Right, I would say that in terms of, of having something that we rent, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, and we do not have two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, so we're really down to leasing it. And getting the best deal for that with, uh, the best residual buyout.
Yeah.
For it that, that we can.
And a manufactured building that's thirty-five years old is gonna need a lot of work, so might as well start with a new one.
That things are, just like any home that's thirty-five years old, has other things going on inside of it, too.
Especially manufactured.
Is that a one-hundred percent flat roof, or does it have some kind of still?
Till, it's actually a, um, it's sloped from side to side.
Like a pretty small slope.
It's a small slope, it's probably like a two and a half, two and a half free percent.
What kind of surface do you have on that roofing?
It, it's a metal.
Oh, metal, okay.
That'll sound cool on a rainy day.
Well, yeah, I mean.
So you won't hear.
Metal's gonna last a lot longer with a.
Yeah.
Lower slope like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Rooms, we have, now, they, they will work with us if we want to, uh, move that wall that you see on the, the, the wall on the far, the room on the far. Uh, right there would be the deputy substation.
Okay, gotcha. Front corner?
This right here.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and the conference room is in the?
It's in the back.
That corner on the right.
That would be where the conference room slash municipal court would be.
Okay.
The middle room there would be our break room.
Okay.
Okay, um, and the, um. Two restrooms, uh, there would be two offices available, and of course, the big area for, um, the city hall.
Are two restrooms necessary for?
Um, yeah, because I think one of them would be, um, I think we'd have one for staff and one for public.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that makes sense.
Kind of had that before.
Um, yeah, and, and that's, I think that.
Not that many people or whatever.
No, but, um, given the, um, makeup of our staff, um, having one for the men and one for the women works out better.
Oh, Genie's made a comment on there.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
The sheriff's substation?
It's the front right building, right?
Yes, it's the room on the, uh, if you're, oh, okay, um, unfortunately, let's see here.
She may not.
Unfortunately, she does not, because I don't have this online.
Okay.
And I, I presume those bathrooms are ADA compliant.
Yes, they are.
That's why they got the little.
Yep.
Yeah, you see the ADA compliant.
Yeah. And I don't know if the nineteen eighty-nine would.
Oh, Genie said perfect, we're good.
Okay, yes, well, it does, we have a, we have a room that's about the same.
It's like it's about ten by ten, or eleven by ten, or something like that, Genie.
There is no holding cell in it, our current.
Right.
One does, of course, they could always use it for that reason if they decide to sell them to do it.
Three by twelve.
But, uh.
So, um, you had mentioned that they have some designs that are kind of modern and timbery, is that? I, I mean, this looks like a pretty basic model, which is fine, we just need.
Model.
Which is good, we just need something to get the job done. Do, do we get to pick the color scheme, so it's Monroe-y, or how does that work? At least just so it fits into our ethos.
It's a very basic color, it's the same kind of beige-like color building. I don't know if we have any options or not with that.
Okay, got it.
Um, I suppose if we were to buy it, we would, I don't know, I, and I, I don't know, I, we haven't gone as far as. What if we wish to actually do this, and what options do we have? I did ask about moving some walls or doing something like that. They can certainly do that, because this is being built.
Perspect.
And being sent.
Yeah.
There are minor things we can do, and I don't know if color is one of them.
Got it, okay. I mean, and that's, you know, that's just like a, a vanity thing, but I also would love if someday Monroe had a, a cool. City count, city hall, excuse me, that represents.
I, I certainly would suggest that this does not.
Yeah.
And I think that, um, one of the things council may consider is going to the voters and getting a real city hall.
Yeah. Okay.
And that, in that case, you can have an architect come and build you.
Yeah.
A, a, a building that represents Monroe.
For a million dollars.
But this is, is a, um, th- this is the solution to get us out of the current building.
Right.
Make it safe.
Totally.
Yeah, that's the important.
Take care of another building that probably, you know, is a kind of a, at a point where the city should take care of it.
Yeah.
And, um, so it's kind of taking care of several things, but it is, I would consider it a. Temporary, you know, and in Monroe's case, maybe it's temporary meaning several years, but I would hope that. As Monroe grows, it wants the citizens say, you know what, we would like to do that, but other towns have. Or we could have someone build a.
Yeah.
Entrance like, say, like what has with the, um, art center, that, that, you know, as you recall, that was the Hard Times Distillery, and that was just a metal building.
That's a really good point.
And, and the Grant Construction did a wonderful job of.
They did.
Doing that, and there's nothing that says they can't do it here.
Okay.
As an add-on to it.
Okay, cool, that's, that's a good consideration.
The other thing that I, I told them, um, with this, you'll see there's ramps and other things there, there are options to lower it. Okay, that we can do, and so, but I did, again, in terms of not having their engineers and architects involved. To get a thing out, that's also another, since we have a few, a few months to do that, there is an option to lower it and not have to spend the money. On ADA ramps or skirting or anything else. In other words, have a more of a ground level.
Right.
Right.
Structure, which I would prefer.
Okay.
And I think citizens would.
Accessibility is better.
Yeah.
Accessibility.
And what's the, um, payout length of the lease if, if we kept it?
If we kept it?
Yeah, I mean, like, is, is this like, uh, like three thousand, thirty-two hundred? Is this like a?
Months at a time at the moment.
For twelve months at a time, but is it like a ten, fifteen-year?
No, it's just twelve months at a time, it's just, uh, just a, a very specific period. It's not a lease like you have a twenty-year lease or something like that, because we are a government agency, we have to go between our fiscal years with it.
Ah.
Aren't we on two-year, no way?
It's that the, the state of Oregon requires a twelve-month.
That's right, we're on two-year for our.
Two-year for our budget, but in terms of our fiscal cycle, you've seen, in other words, you could come in for next year and say, you know, we have no money.
Yeah.
In that case, we have to figure, you know, we'll set up a tent somewhere for you guys, and we'll have to return this. Uh, which.
You might be sitting here all day.
Yeah, or you may have to do something else, maybe you're in, maybe you're here, maybe, you know, we, we have to be flexible with that. In which case, we would have to give it back and not make the payment on it.
But we'd have to pay twenty thousand dollars for them to take it back.
Return it, yes, and we would, we would have that contingency to do that if we had to, or out of our.
You'd owe that.
Other funds that we would have available.
I, I assume the, uh, present city hall will be kept for a while as storage.
Yes, it's not gonna be demolished or anything else, it's just.
By storage.
It'll be unoccupied storage, um, we will still be using the back end of it or archives, um, computer, we have. C G I S requires us to have a secure area, um, all of our file cabinets, all those things will be kept in the. In, in the back area there, we also have a bunch of other things that should not be stored in the, in the wet, um, those will move over as well.
Sounds good.
And public works in the back will continue to be, one thing I have not dealt with is public works. Um, and how that might work, uh, so we're working on that, that could be a separate smaller trailer. To do that, um, it could be a separate building even in back of the current room, that, uh, allows staff to have an area to.
Little job trailer?
Like a job trailer, exactly, contractor's trailer, nothing big, they don't need something big, but they do need something that's warm to get out of the rain and do their work.
Yeah.
Without bringing the mud into city hall.
Makes sense.
Because that's what happens right now, the mud comes in the city hall.
Yeah, right through the carpet.
Yep.
Right.
Right, right down.
Right on the carpet through the, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this looks good, promising.
Think so.
Yeah, thank you.
If you're, uh, if, if, you know, what I will do then is I will proceed with the details that you've all talked with, like such as residuals, buyouts, color schemes. Kind of more the details of present that at city council next week.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions before we move on? Okay, uh, next up, library handoff to S B C E A. We've got, we have a guest this evening.
Yeah, so we have, uh, Roger Urban from the S B C E A here tonight, do you want to step up to the mic and share what you've learned?
Make sure you turn your mic on, too, Roger.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
We remember you well. There you go.
All right.
Go ahead.
What have you learned from your board?
The, well, what we discussed in the negotiating team, they're generally acceptable to. But we were awaiting a written response in the form of an agreement, so we can act on it Wednesday night, and I don't think that's gonna happen now. Since we don't have it, and I'm not sure that we are clear what the whole council is in agreement with.
Oh, I thought we were still waiting on Corvallis' agreement.
Oh, the I G A.
That agreement is been signed.
Okay.
So you guys have signed that, okay.
Okay.
That agreement's in place, and it, it's not a, it's not an I G A, because we're not a government agency.
Right, okay.
So it's a simple operating agreement.
Okay, gotcha.
And it has similar conditions to the current one the city has.
When does it go into effect?
Well. I'm gonna recommend acceptance of that at our meeting Wednesday.
Okay.
With stipulations based on us actually taking the building.
Okay.
So it wouldn't take effect until the deed transfer.
Okay.
And I think the reason we didn't respond with anything in writing is because we still have to discuss as a council. Not at a work session necessarily, but I think at city council, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but the, the details of landscape. Uh, irrigation, all that stuff, right?
Well, yeah, the, um, the, uh. We had some things up in the air in terms of costs and that type of thing, I think we had tentatively decided that, uh. As I understand anyway, that we would, you know, landscaping, we would, we would continue, we would mow the lawns in the May and June timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We would not charge water or sewer.
That's right.
And what was the other thing that we, oh, and provide, uh, and we would provide the level of janitorial service. That is currently in place right now.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that would, there would need to be a little bit of writing on that, just to make sure that we understand what the expectations are. But it'd be the same level of, it would be the same level as, as what, um, Ron is producing right now. So tho- those are the basic things that we, we had already discussed, um, there was an additional question about the, uh, insurance.
All right.
Uh, C I S says no, however, we reached out to David Gross-Nicholas at Pacific Hometown Insurance. He is out of the office today, but we should get an answer tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So C I S is, is our insurance agency, but Pacific Hometown Insurance underwrites it.
Oh.
Okay, so we need to get an understanding from the underwriter what they're willing to do and not do.
Got it.
Should I give you a full disclosure that I know Dave Gross-Nicholas?
Oh, excellent, I do, too.
I do as well.
Friend as long as.
Yeah. Yeah, the gross necklace is, uh, there.
I know his dad and whole family.
So does that, does that give you enough information to take back to them in the meantime, or would you like to wait until we can send something tomorrow night after we hear from David Gross?
And I can, I can forward that information on.
Okay, but my understanding, too, is we talked about utilities being paid.
We, we haven't talked about that yet.
But I don't think that's been formal, I mean, we discussed it, I mean, it's been talked about, but no decisions.
No decisions, yeah.
Other than water and sewer.
Yeah.
So, put it another way is. We don't have the ability to take that facility, if there are any out-of-pocket costs on the day that the property is transferred. That would be utilities and insurance. So we simply can't do that.
Is there, would there be a timeframe, like, maybe six months after, or would it be longer than that?
Three months, like, what kind of a transitional period would you guys need? I know that there is some talk of fundraising, too.
So let, let me.
We're in the process of buying for grants.
Okay.
Okay.
But, you know, we, we have been talking about a six-month period.
Sure.
That would allow us to do that, and certainly if we were successful sometime in there, we could resolve that, but.
Okay.
As, you know, we're using January first as a target.
Right.
And on that day, we can't have a lapse in insurance.
Right.
And a month later, we have to be able to pay the power bill.
Right.
And we have. No cash flow at this point, hopefully, we have a good opportunity at, at least one grant. And we're looking for others, and we're all, we're still trying to gather volunteers and things to.
Okay.
Help with running the building, so, um. Being without those essentials really puts us in a negative position.
Okay, what were you gonna say, Steve?
Well, I was just gonna say is that my understanding, this is why I have to talk to David Gross-Nicholas, is because that building is our building. And if it passes hands, it's no longer our building, so therefore, there's no basis for insuring it.
Right.
Under our name, so we would have to keep the building for the entire time, would still be our building.
Right.
It's our building, then the electric, you know, if.
All that goes along with it.
All the costs involved then are still our costs.
Right.
Is what I'm saying, and so now we are into the whole, now the city hall has to be moved and taken care of.
Right.
Out of other monies and pockets of monies that we did not budget for.
Right, we can't do both.
Yeah, it's one or the other.
I mean, I, we can do it, but we're gonna have to look at where it's gonna have to be, there might be other services and other things in town that will not be able to be taken care of.
Nope, that makes sense.
That's, that's really, it is, you're, you have a tube of toothpaste at the moment, there is no extra money.
No, I understand that.
Certainly no extra money, but.
Yeah.
Is there the potential for having S B C A identified as an additional insured?
That's, that was the question, yes, without getting into technical details, we, you know, how, how can we make this work, and that's why I need to talk to David Gross-Nicholas.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's where we stand, and we have meeting Wednesday, um, we've already approved, what I understood our tentative agreement was. Which included utilities in my mind. And the potential for insurance, we never settled on that. But right now, we don't have that lined up, so if, if you want to transfer the building on the first, we need to have. Something to cover that for some period of time.
Okay.
And if not, we'll simply have to wait until we're in that position.
Um, if we have to extend our current situation by another month or two, is that a possibility in order to get everything finalized?
Well, in terms of extending, no, there's, there's no issue with that, uh, the issue is money.
Yeah.
Okay.
The issue is.
It's just kicking a can.
If we're gonna, if, if we don't have access to the library to provide a city hall for X many times, and the answer to that is no, we don't. Then we have to come up with the money ourselves, we did not budget for that.
Mm-hmm.
So we would have to look at other line items and see where we can take that money. Maybe, you know, and I'm, there, and maybe we take things like our L G I P, that's our interest we have, and maneuver it around. And right now, we did, we distribute that L G I P basically based upon the fund size. So what L G I P is the interest that we get on our reserves, we try to keep as much of our money out of the, we keep as much money in the bank as we need to manage cash flow. And contingency, but we take all the rest, we give it to the state of Oregon, they manage it and give us five-point-three percent in return. Now, on two million dollars, those are basically our reserve funds, okay? That can bring, that brings in a nine thousand dollars plus a month.
Mm-hmm.
So with that in mind, okay, we would need a resolution basically to say. We are not gonna put the money, we're gonna take the, our interest money and use it here, instead of there, instead of splitting it between the funds.
Well, and also the building, you said it wouldn't be. Available at the earliest in April?
Correct, but we still have other things, if you look at the spreadsheet I gave you. Um, we are currently, the projections for that three months, um, were at this moment, six thousand dollars in the hole. Based upon what we know as site prep, move and set up the first three months of the lease, April, May, and June. Um, versus what we have in our reserves, what we have in the library, you can see up above what I recommended, which was janitorial supplies and, and janitorial.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if you subtract that from what our projected amount is, you come up with about fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. That comes up to available amount of money, forty-eight thousand two sixty-five, um, projected costs at this point are fifty-four three oh six. So we're already at a point where we gotta come up with six thousand forty-one, now again, is that doable in our L G I P amounts? Probably so, that would be the amount of money that, you know, is probably a little bit more, we could probably get away with doing that, we have other funds, too, I mean, we could. We have contingency as well, but that also takes away from your beginning fund balance at the beginning of next year.
Mm-hmm.
So you really don't want to do that unless you have to. You know, so we're trying to stay within our means, number one, and number two, if. But don't move at all, then no, there's no expenses whatsoever, right? But then you're saying to your staff, you know, you're, you're, you're caught in, in the.
Right.
In the web of commitments and moving and all those different things.
Well, and also you're biting the bullet for that temporary amount of time to hand it off so that it won't be an issue in the future.
Yeah, like, I, I feel like we do have to spend a little bit to get them.
Basically, if we have to eat some costs to. You know, basically successfully hand off and not lose library services and.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's just. The costs of getting out of the agreements that we had.
Yeah.
You know, to, for the library in the first place, I mean.
I agree, yeah, there, I mean, I, it.
It would be just like if we had to turn in the, you know, you get the mobile unit, you have to turn it in, you gotta pay your.
Had to be hauled back.
You gotta pay your, your costs so that you can stop being on the hook for your monthly payment or whatever, I mean, that's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with.
So if we have to cut somewhere to.
Yeah, it just depends on how much. Like we have it with, with the interest, but it will have to be cut from where it's used.
We, uh, we started working out those projections last week of what areas we have, um, we also have some increase, we also have other increased costs, too, so. Um, I just have to look at it to find out.
Cause.
Right.
Yeah, cause I mean, you're looking at.
How much money do, do we have, and where could it come from? Council will need to make a decision as to where that comes from.
Cause you're looking at another nine thousand dollars, basically was what was remaining of the, or a little bit more, ninety-five hundred or something for, uh. If, for, if insurance and. Um, electricity continued. And then, um. And then there's six thousand there.
There's four thousand nine fifty-seven.
Six thousand deficit, too.
Electricity, so that would be in addition to the six thousands, that's eleven thousand, uh, dollars.
Hmm.
So. At this point, that's really what you're looking at, if you're looking at, uh, um, and the alarm service, if you're gonna continue that, be another hundred thirty-one, so you're looking, let's just say in around numbers, twelve thousand dollars.
I think we need to look at moving money around then to make this transition happen, I think it's just an expense that we're gonna have to incur this time, personally, I mean, it's, I. Otherwise, we're just gonna keep having this conversation, and we're not gonna have the money in the future, and like, we just need to. Get, get the S B C E A and the library standing on its own, because. The city is in a precarious situation currently, we just can't keep perpetuating it. And it's gonna cost some money.
They are unable, okay, I will, I, I, the, the, the card that I don't know is the insurance.
Yeah.
We need to know that.
So if it stays under the, under the city, then are we also gonna make sure that all the maintenance and everything else is taken care of, and all the cleaning and everything else? Because it's our building, and that's up to you folks, but if we do that, then all those expenses.
Yeah.
Right.
You're now looking at twenty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars in addition.
Yeah.
So, and I can tell you, we don't have that in the budget.
Right.
Gotcha.
If you're gonna talk to the insurance company, could you ask them if they could transfer the city's insurance to us?
Yeah, that's.
For a price.
That, that, that is what I asked C I S, C I S said, that's no, but. You need to talk to Pacific Hometown, and that's the question for them, is can they transfer that to the S B C?
Be a new policy, but if they.
Right.
Write it the same and what.
Right.
Right.
I'm mostly interested in what the cost would be.
Right, and, and David is very good at telling me, at telling us exactly what they can and cannot do, so.
So is here and tonight a good time to decide what we would do with utilities, or?
We can't decide anything, cause it's a work session.
At this point, um, at this point, it really is, one, um, I need to be able to tell you where the money's coming from.
Okay.
We cannot spend money we don't have.
Right.
Got it.
That's, that's the law.
So we won't have information for you before your meeting on Wednesday, sorry, Roger.
Okay, well.
Yeah, the city council.
I can, I can talk about, I mean, if, if the issue is, if the issue is five thousand dollars in utilities and the insurance is the one, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right, we need to know the answer to that.
So the other one is whether or not we continue to pay for the utilities, that's an extra five thousand dollars. And the other six thousand, can, can, can we come up with twelve thousand dollars? And the other six thousand, can, can, can we come up with twelve thousand dollars somewhere? The answer is yes, we probably can.
Okay. We have to decide where it comes from.
Figure out where.
Where it's gonna come out from. The big question is, once we get more than twelve thousand dollars, though, the answer is we really don't.
Yeah.
Other than taking from contingency.
Okay.
Which you can do, but that just takes.
We need to know all the impacts of.
Either that or taking a loan from a fund or something.
Can we add that to our agenda?
Oh, yes.
For next week?
Yeah, it's actually on the, that will be on the edge. I've already had that penciled in.
Thank you.
We, we have to come up with a decision, none of this tonight, this is just preliminary.
Talking updates.
We wanted to give Roger an idea of going to his board of what we're capable of doing. At this point, could we take from contingency? The answer is yes, we could. Could we take a loan from a SDC? Yes, we could. We have to pay it back though by the end of next fiscal year.
What's the interest rate on paying it back?
Well, there's no interest rate.
Okay.
Say, we just have to make sure if we take out ten thousand dollars, you put, you took ten thousand dollars back.
Oh, it's our own SDC dollar, okay, got it, we're just moving around, okay. No, I get it, I get it.
Specifically have to be used for a certain thing, you can't permanently just take the money.
We can't use SDCs for this building.
No.
Correct, because by statute, SDCs are.
Resilience.
Jimmy's got a, only used for certain.
Yes, she says we also have water things come in, think about, which we do.
Yep.
So there's other issues and problems that we have that, we start taking money away from things.
Right.
Now, yeah, there's lots of, we have more than just water SDCs and sewer SDCs, so. This could certainly be taken from, we, we have five SDCs.
Okay.
So versus, it could be taken from the street SDC.
Yeah.
Which is probably what I would recommend that we take it from, cuz that's the one that has.
That's the one we don't have any project that we're planning.
Well, we don't have enough money in it to do a project. I mean, at the cost of doing one city block, we don't have enough in our SDC to do even one city block, so.
Building is very expensive.
Yeah. So it makes sense to borrow from that if, if that were the case. Rather than, I would not want to borrow, or I would not want to recommend to borrow from water or sewer or storm.
Yeah.
Anything related to the, what's going on with.
Infrastructure for parks, that, that leaves parks and streets.
Okay.
I always recommend that we leave our parks SDC alone, that leaves streets. Are streets important? Yes. Do I have any capacity issues with streets at the moment? No. Our new, our developer, for instance, on A Street's gonna have to improve all those streets on their own dime, not ours. I do have a stormwater project on Kelly Street with that stormwater SDC.
Yeah. What if we put a carousel and a swing set in front of the city, the new city hall and call it a park?
You know, just thinking, just looking at what we looked at last week, the streets would be the most reasonable place. We can't use that for water, we can't use that, you know. We could borrow from any of those, but I would not recommend borrowing from water, we've done that in the past and that hurt us.
Yeah, a, and you had suggested, starting with LGIP before SDCs anyway.
Suggest that we look, because that is an arbitrary placement based upon the percentage of size of funds.
Okay.
So we look at the, all the reserve funds, the size of them, and to develop a percentage, based on the size of the fund and then distribute the LGIP according to that percentage.
Okay.
Okay, so it's very straightforward, but it's also one that we came up with, not something that was.
Mandated.
Mandated, we just simply put it in our budget that way.
Okay.
What about the sale of the property that we had talked about a while ago?
So do that, there's no, the only restriction, the only restriction on that property was water. So the sale of any of our property, but that was by resolution and you can change that. But that's what the original intent of sale of all of our property was for water.
Okay.
Oh, so we'd have to make a resolution.
Yeah, if you wanted to, or. That into SDC or reserve and then borrow from it if you wanted to, but again, you borrow from it, you gotta repay it.
So, alright.
Talking twelve thousand dollars, is that amount of money that we, you know, say, and then we looked at our LGIP and said, we're gonna repay it by putting our interest in there? You could certainly look at that as well, which would not directly impact current operating costs or the current operating budget of the city.
Okay, so we have options, and we can discuss those options at our next.
Right. Budget, so we have to discuss the entire ramification of it, not just, oh yeah, we can do that, but
Okay.
I need to let you know.
Whole picture.
The whole picture.
Okay, and we don't have the answer about the insurance yet anyway, so we, it'll be next week.
A big piece and you need to know that and. Insurance gives us the.
Okay.
With that electric bill, it looks like it would be, if we put real solar panels up there.
If we get three hundred dollars a month in the summertime.
And, and if they can't do the endorsement on the insurance and if we have to keep the, I mean, we would just be transferring the building at the point that, I mean, we could still do the.
What we would do then is probably have, we would then probably need to negotiate what that means. So the negotiations.
Yeah, cuz we're already talking about, you know, if we're talking about paying the utilities, I mean, basically, we would just be you know, deferring the, what, what else, the maintenance, I think was the thing.
That would be the big thing, would be the maintenance pieces and the deep cleaning pieces. I would say those should go to the SBCA, that would be, you know, my thought on that. And they could, can decide whether to do, do something about it, defer it, use volunteers, funds or anything else.
Was that, that was just maintenance on the building, not repair stuff?
That was, no.
Cuz I know that they have the, for like big, I mean, if, if, if part of that was doing.
Legacy fund repairs.
Oh, okay, that's why I was wondering, I, I was like, if this is supposed to be like.
These are non-legacy fund repairs, for the most part, they're things like light bulbs.
Big tickets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are the small ticket items.
Okay.
And the janitorial contracted was the deep cleaning, high surface cleaning and that type of thing.
Okay.
Not, not the day-to-day stuff, but the things you would have to get scaffolding or man lifts, person lifts to get up and take care of.
So two questions then, um, one for Roger. Since we don't have anything written to you yet, do you still feel like you're able to share the intent and like what we're looking into with the board on Wednesday?
Oh, yes.
Okay, like.
What I'm more concerned about is the.
The deadline.
Deal.
Right.
Right.
When the transfer takes place, you know, that we actually have an ironclad agreement.
Yeah, I, my, my guess, and you all can correct me if I'm mistaken, is we're all shooting for one, one twenty-five, there will probably be some overlap into early twenty twenty-five. Just trying to get this finalized and, and cemented. Am I incorrect there? I mean, we're gonna need more time.
I, I would say that if we could get the insurance piece wrapped up, we can get to you on Monday. What the dollar costs of where they could possibly go.
Okay.
That could be a resolution to transfer funds.
Okay.
So it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't have to be an ordinance, it could be, it would have to be by resolution.
Right.
Okay. What, do you?
I can, I can do that as, as early or late as twenty minutes to five on Monday.
Awesome, okay.
Give me five minutes to print it out.
Thank you. Do you, do you think there will be any need for an executive session about the library later this month? Or do you think we really could get this finalized at the next council meeting?
Think, I think the big issues will be whether or not the SBA, you know, what, insurance.
Yeah.
Okay, the funds for the electricity and the additional that we think we need, and I think that's gonna come probably from LGIP and some, maybe some borrowing. And then at the next fiscal year, if we have any over, carryover, we can utilize that to pay off things too, so. We may have some more flexibility with that, but that's a kind of a long-term thing. Meeting a year and a half, long-term.
Okay, intermediate.
We borrowed today, we would owe, um, June, by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Whatever we borrowed from our reserves would be due and payable.
Hopefully we do the LGIP route, but we'll see.
Well, and we could use the LGIP to pay it back, we could just simply say, we're gonna route our LGIP this direction.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we should theoretically have something finalized by one, one twenty-five.
So would SBCA be willing to take over the deep cleaning, the things that are not routine daily maintenance? But we're talking about the beams, the high stuff, you know, that kind of thing.
I think that's fair, yeah, I mean, and also stuff that could be deferred if we don't get.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm more concerned about the immediacy of things that have to be paid for. And process-wise, you know, once we have this tied down, then uh, we need to have an agreement with the city, an agreement that needs to go to our board.
Yeah, that's in writing, so that you have, yeah.
At that point. Right.
Would also have to go to our board.
Right, so I, so in that respect, counselor, I would, you're right, it would probably be in January.
Okay.
Late January, early February timeframe, if we go to council on January twenty, whatever it is. Um, and then your board meeting is thereafter.
We have the sixteenth, I think, is ours.
Sixteenth, yeah, of this month, but I'm talking about, you know.
January.
January.
Right, cuz we might have to go to maternity, we would go.
Yeah, we should go to.
We would go to Lori. Something up, same month agreement that has to go to their board.
Wrong rear.
For approval, and then probably then January, and then back to us and our January council for ratification.
Okay.
Unless we did an emergency meeting or something.
Get an emergency meeting, which is possible, I mean, it's, we're not tied to the fourth, they can, we can hold a special session.
It would, or a special, yeah.
There's a sequence between.
Yeah.
Back and forth.
Right.
So if you did prove things at your next meeting, then we could target the approval at our first January meeting.
Excellent, and then we can have a special session thereafter to approve that.
And if that's the case, then we need to.
We need to extend the IGA a little bit longer.
At least for thirty days or forty-five days or something to.
IGA is independent of this agreement.
Right.
So if, if, if the, yeah, this has always been, I know, a, a moment of confusion here, the IGA has nothing to do with the ownership of the building.
Right.
No, but it, it has to do with the continuation of library services.
The IG, you guys are gonna do a, a, a service.
Or he said they have an agreement.
That's already been signed.
Okay.
Well, we, we're gonna approve it Wednesday.
So li, so library services would continue.
Right.
And you guys would, on January one is the hope.
Well, we might be able to do that.
And I will.
That would be the other concern, you know, we want library services to continue and not have a lapse in that, in addition to the.
I think we're, we're gonna guarantee that, but to guarantee that, that. I mean, if we're confident that we have an agreement there, then we can do that.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I, um, I think realistically, we're not going to have another meeting this month after city council. With the holidays.
And regardless, Lori would need, she's gonna be. She's gonna be on, you know, do the first of Jan, the first week of January anyway, so.
Right.
We would be looking at their January board meeting to approve what the tentative agreement. And then whatever's drafted would then hopefully get back to their board by that time. And then, so we could get a special session together and approve it. The IGA, I think on this next meeting, you would want to make sure for Rogers and SBCA's point that we have a good tentative agreement and understanding that we are moving forward, it's just a matter of.
Formality.
Of, you know, getting, going to back and forth, but Roger is saying that he needs to have a little bit of certainty from us.
Yeah.
Right.
So he can continue in good faith with the I, with, not with the IGA, with the services. That provides continuity for library services. And then it really is a matter of us not coming up with any surprises from what we decide this next Monday.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep.
And this will all be discussed, it'll all be on the agenda for next Monday.
The mayor will asserten, and if he doesn't, I, I have a pitch note with library.
Alright.
We have a big stamp now.
A big stamp, library, but mayor sheets and I will ensure that it's on.
Yep.
Okay, and would you be prepared to start that conversation about the details with the, the financing piece or the funding piece and the?
We, we've already done the preparation for that already, in the office last week.
Okay.
And the, the final marching orders, if you will, are from this evening, I have those.
Okay, excellent. I just know that I will get lost in those details and I don't wanna bungle it, especially this close to the finish line.
At this point, it'll, it'll be some good spreadsheets with, it, it's, it's not difficult, it's just really us understanding what the dollar amounts are and where it comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Awesome.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, thank you.
Conserving energy.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the update, Roger. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the next new discussion item on the agenda, establishing amount of lean for nine eighty Commercial Street. Fun.
So we have put up, we have a, we, we have a lean service and we put a lean on the house already. However, we also have, we went through a very long labor illegal process with our judge and everything else and the state of Oregon. Do not just, this is the lean that goes and goes to the recorded.
On the title.
County.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Um, not just on our books, but at Benton County. This gives the city certain rights and privileges above and beyond what we, we have on our city docket. Um, it's also the culmination of our judge signing off on it, and we did, you know, there's a lot of legal process that had to be gone through in order to get to this point.
Yeah.
Um, so at this point, the judge has signed off on it, we have the requisite number of days that we have to wait for any resolution to this. In this process, letters had to be sent, all of that, it all had to be I's dotted, T's crossed. So at this point, council by resolution needs to decide what the dollar amount of the lean will be. So tonight is not a decision, it's just basically a discussion. When I form, I will have a resolution, the resolution will have a blank line for the dollar amount, which can be written in, it doesn't have to be typed in, it can be written in at that point. Um, that, and in our minutes that it was discussed and put in and then signed as we normally do. That will accompany this to Benton County and to the court, it'll actually go to the court, meaning Judge Blake, his office.
Yes.
It'll then be filed.
Got it.
Okay.
And how much is our new city hall again? I'm kidding.
There we go.
Sorry.
Two hundred twenty-seven dollars versus about two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Wow. Amazing.
So there you go. Um, I, what I will do is I will present to you, we have about seven thousand dollars in attorney fees, court fees and city time and expense. We have an initial fine of a thousand dollars, plus another two hundred twenty thousand dollars in daily fines. The person is still listing and registering that, so you, you have to do is decide what the deterrence value is of not breaking city ordinance. You expressed the idea that we didn't wanna collect money, but we did want to get the guy compliance or any individual, this did not happen.
Right.
Um, so you're going to have to balance what the right thing to do is.
And refresh my memory, he had an opportunity to appeal with the judge and he no showed, is that correct?
Again, yes, a, all of this.
He had every opportunity.
All of this has to go through legal process and the legal process sends notices and all that out and it had to be done prescribed by Oregon statute, otherwise the judge could not sign off.
Well, and even well before it went to the, to, to Judge Blake, there was like multiple notices and conversations.
Yes.
Letting him know that, you know, he needed to go to the planning commission.
We, I think we, I think we made it very clear, so it's not as though this was not, you know, and, and again, in order to the legal process, it's just like anything else, you get notified in the mail, you have to, it's just, you have to be served, you have to, we actually had to post the notice up on his doorstep.
Wow.
And all this was recorded and sent to the judge, again, the judge would not have signed off on it.
Right.
Was not legal correct.
Yeah, we've done everything correctly, had every opportunity and still.
And it still has not done it, the house is for sale. The question is, what should the fine be? So what should the lean amount be? That is the.
Cuz whatever, whatever they record as the lean is basically what.
What legally.
Escrow is gonna tell them, well, we can't cash this out until you pay off your.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
It can be less than seventy-five percent or more.
Okay, so at this point, it could be, it, the, the lean is what the lean is, it's what, what we have penal, what we have fined them for. Around two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. We were to take that amount and then if this council decided to. we were to take that amount and then if this council decided to for close on it.
Okay.
Put it up for sale, then it could be for no less than seventy-five percent of the appraised value. Um, I think we had this discussion before, although Oregon does not require it. Many other states have had lawsuits which have basically told cities, no, you cannot keep all the money. You have to give back, say that seventy-five percent back to the.
That sells for more than the lean amount or whatever.
Lean amount, then you have to give it back.
The difference between the two.
And I think ethically, I.
You should.
This council, you would not want. You would, you would want to recover your costs and your, yeah, whatever you decide. So this is, so if you decide on that lean, it's a hundred thousand dollars and you put the house up for sale and it brings in a hundred and ten thousand dollars, then the city collects one hundred thousand, the owner gets ten thousand.
That should have just done the paperwork. I'm sorry, I'm, I've gotten over this so many times, but, and that's not even the point of discussion anyway. Now we're talking about.
Four hundred dollars.
It's insane.
Very simple thing and it was, it was made, but the individual decided they did not want to talk. We were abusive and, and we were A abusive and it was an abuse of government authority. And really all it was, was coming to the planning commission.
Which you do in every city if you wanna, yeah.
Yeah, this is no, no different.
Zoning, yeah.
And even in Portland, this would have been a land use decision. It would not have been a, a simple permit uh, for what he's doing. It would have been a type two decision. It would have had to go through land use. People within two hundred and fifty feet would have had to be notified.
Cause it's, cause it's outside of the.
It's commercial use in a residential area.
Residential zoning.
Residential zone, and it was more than just a couple, couple rooms.
Right.
It was a, it was a basically essentially a boarding facility. And in Portland, this would have been a five, you know, if you want to rent out more than two rooms, it is considered a type two land decision.
So is there any guidance? Like what, what is a typical best practice for like determining what a city should actually put on that line versus the lean?
Dollar amount, but the guidance is, what do you value in terms, okay, number one, do you wish to recover your costs?
Well, yeah.
Direct costs.
Yeah.
Two, what kind of statement do you wish to make for people that want to come in this town and be in abeyance of our laws? And that's really the thing. Is it one dollar? Is it a hundred thousand dollars? You know, is it takes what the difference?
Right.
Is it take seventy-five percent of it? I mean, at some point, what, this is the first time the city's ever done this. So you really are setting a precedent for what occurs down.
It's a messaging thing.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if.
It is.
Depending on how lenient you are or how aggressive you are, you're setting a past practice that you're gonna have to follow.
Yes.
Perpetuality.
That's the precedent, yeah.
If you have it on the books that that's what the penalties are for not doing it, and then you decide you're just not gonna.
Not do it. Not hit them, yeah.
Then, you know, it doesn't give you very much.
You're gonna have more.
It doesn't give it much teeth for the future when somebody says, well, look at, look at in the past when they just like let it, they just let it slide.
Yeah.
So now, I don't know. Once this lean gets placed, that, that does not mean that this individual cannot, he has twelve months to appeal it.
Ah.
So he still has appeal rights. And during that appeal, it could be arbitrated.
Hmm.
Okay. And then the arbitrator can decide that it's worth this. Now, one thing that could be arbitrated is the fact that we have since put a short term permitted. Now, he does not qualify for that based on his current operations.
Right.
But the fact the city was moving in that direction would be.
Well, and that was one of the reasons why, why we were that. And there was one other person that really wanted to, you know.
That, that, speaking of which, that individual just put their packet in front of me today.
Oh.
It will be signed and they have their hundred dollar check.
But that, that was part of what was prompting it was people wanting to use.
And I'm gonna be, it'll be immediate. Tomorrow, they'll be able to do their thing.
My suggestion or just like my first thought on balancing the ethics and the city's integrity with having teeth, you know, like we, we definitely need to recover our costs at least whatever that, you know, six, seven thousand dollars. I can't remember what the, the amount you said was. And we, you know, we're not here to make money. We're here to have a city that's functioning and that people understand how it functions. And I, my suggestion would be to request fifty percent of the lean amount. You know, I think that would be what, like a hundred and eleven thousand dollars or a hundred and fifteen or something?
If you run a hundred, if you add everything up, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's, yeah, I mean, I feel like you're.
Costs and.
Yeah.
So that is in this next Monday, that's what you're, that, that's the decision, that's the discussion, the deliberation and what you'll do. You'll submit us. I suggest fifty percent.
So you'll.
I suggest a hundred percent.
But you'll, but you'll just have it with a blank line and we can decide what that is. Okay.
We'll fill that in as the city recorder function. Um, I will fill that in and, uh, the mayor will sign it. I'll attest and we will go from there. I will get the exact verbiage from our attorney as to what I need to write in there. It's kind of like a notarized thing where you, you test, attest that this dollar amount was discussed and this is what it is. That way, when it goes in, it's done, but you will decide that, that dollar amount. That is actually by our, as we discussed during our penalties.
Ordinance meeting.
Ordinance meeting. Uh, the council decides the penalties.
Got it.
I have a quick question, though. I, I agree with this, the statement that we're not here to like make a whole bunch of money on somebody. We're just trying to cover costs. But are there any projected future costs past this point? When we need to think of those and say ten percent more than.
Or related to that property?
Well, like you said, if it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we come up with and it's a hundred and twenty with all our cost.
Oh.
We may have future projected cost based on that property, and maybe we want to put another ten percent, which we can actually rebate. Can we do that? If, if it doesn't, if it occurs, we can have it. If it doesn't occur, we, we can rebate.
You could do that. You can also take the money and move it into a dedicated, which is what I'd recommend. I think we have to do that anyway. No, we don't. No, we don't, as a matter of fact. But you can move that money into areas that are reserved. And that's probably, i- if this were the case, you'd want to do that, then any monies received would be, have to go into reserve fund and stay in that reserve fund for at least twelve months.
Okay.
And so you might want to move into streets funds, for instance. You could put it back into the water fund. But you can put it into a special reserve fund for abatements and penalties, which could also be used in the future to abate all the different.
Yeah, because just as you get that money, you don't want to spend it because then there's the liability of appeals and all that kind of fun stuff.
To, to, to hang on to it. So in the meantime, though, you collect interest on it.
That's a good point.
Which then could be used to pay for the library.
I like that. That sounds good.
Yeah.
So again, this money doesn't come, is not gonna be directly coming from the individuals, can be coming from the house, sale of the house.
Yeah.
Is unfortunate. They were gonna walk away with nothing, but.
I, I mean, that's equal to what they paid for it.
Right.
They paid two twenty or two twenty-five or something.
It's ridiculous.
And they put a lot into it.
I know they did. It's beautiful work inside.
Yeah.
Um, as, as Elaine said, that's the same person that did the Wellhelm House. The cabinetry is the same person that did cabinetry up there.
Yeah, and it was the, the home of the very first mayor of Monroe.
Yes, and it wouldn't work as, as exquisite. You just don't see that level of craftsmanship anymore.
It's really beautiful.
So it's unfortunate all the way around.
Yeah.
So that's your discuss, th- th- that's what, what will be before you and you can continue that, uh, I'll have the, we'll have all the exact numbers, the, the forms, the full thing, so you can see what is being done and said, then you can decide what dollar amount. We'll write that in at the end.
Cool.
You'll have done your first big lean.
Thanks for all that.
With an opportunity for appeal.
Yeah.
So it's not over with, by the means, but we're, but we have, we're following the process.
Yeah. Amazing. It just blows my mind.
It does. Okay. Are we ready to move on? Review of business for the, uh, December sixteenth council meeting. Uh, first item is the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five amended municipal code for penalty fines.
And you should have received an email about that to you last Friday at the last second, so you had it for ten days.
Okay. And then also ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero six, first reading of establishing business permits.
Correct. That'll be what we discussed, a registration only, uh, for that.
Yep.
Um, I think I'm also gonna put in there, uh, for business registration total, but we may also want to consider a business permit for food carts, which we have discussed before. That would not be free. Okay, and I would charge a permit for food carts.
What's that, like fifty bucks usually?
Yeah, that's usual. I, I would probably go to Terraceburg and Model or Junction City. They're, the Junction City are the food cart kings.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something in there, but it, but, but Jonah felt that that, what, he felt that that was reasonable.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, they all do. He keeps everybody in compliance.
Right. He, he feels that being at compliance is a good thing, and I think that's, I, moving away from a business and just going to specific things like a food cart, food cart makes sense.
Yep. Uh, then we've got a res, we've got two resolutions. First one is resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three amending the master fee schedule for fines. We've talked about that.
That, basically, we had some that were sliding, some, you know, that'll all be in there. So, and again, all of those can be lined out. And you can also add a dollar amount that if you feel is different from what's listed, you can change it at that point, and we can do the same basic process.
Good night.
Good night.
This is done in councils and we keep the original copy, the line copy, and then we do the new one that.
Right.
We, so we sign that. So.
Okay.
Um, it can all be done. Trent, the business can be transacted at that point.
Uh, then we've got resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, establishing lean amount for the previously mentioned nine eighty Commercial Street residence.
There you go. Um, on, also on there will be the, um, library, of course.
Yes.
Library discussion, of course.
Thank you.
Um, I might also decide to put a resolution in there on that as well. It might not state exactly what we're doing, but it will give it the intent.
Yeah, like a statement of intent or something like that.
Right. So that, that will give Roger and the SBCEA assurances that that IGA with Corvallis will work. And I think that, I think would satisfy your concerns as well that we have continuity with that.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So that would be resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Whoa, twenty-five resolutions in one year?
I think last year we did twenty-eight, so I think that was the record.
Wow.
But we're, we're close.
Months more.
Oh, no.
Right.
We're gonna have an emergency meeting that.
Yeah, we go.
Right?
Well, if you have an idea, just email me. I'm. I, I'm getting Misty involved in writing, uh, you know, learning how to write these things.
Oh, good.
And she's actually, she enjoys it, so.
Nice.
I'll give her some practice.
It, it is gonna be hard to get people the last two weeks of December anyway.
It will be.
Oh, of course it will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly when you have Christmas in the middle of the week.
Yeah.
I was gonna talk about if staff wanted to take PTO on Monday, but we have meter reset day.
Ah, shoot.
So what I'm gonna do instead, as soon as meter, the re-reads are done, the afternoon around two or three, I'm just gonna let people go.
Okay, then let me know so I can post something.
I'll be in, I still, I still have some things to do, but, um, I'll just let the staff go and.
Okay.
Uh, they can pick things up on Thursday or Thursday.
Okay. Ah. Okay. I do have one item I wanted to mention for other business.
Ooh, TBD.
Yes. So, uh, former counselor Tony Baker is on my mind.
Hmm.
And, um, we do, we have Baker District. We did have a resolution of those.
Signs actually, um.
Do we have those signs yet?
Yeah, they're, they're with Benton County.
Okay.
I put them up there. It takes them a few months at this point to do it, but they're with.
I wanted to ask when they were gonna be done so we could put them up.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have an answer yet. Chris has them up there. Chris is the sign maker for Benton County. But it's in their loop.
Okay.
Whatever happened to the wood sign that?
For the park?
Yeah, remember, uh, Floyd came down often and talked about the sign?
We have a big lump of wood in the back.
Okay, it's still, yeah.
For the sign, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's not carved yet.
Well, we never.
How long has it been there?
Couple, few years. Yeah, and it was donated by Whole Oaks, right?
Yep.
Uh, through Forest Products. It came from Whole Oaks, but it was donated through Forest Products, uh, through, um, a combination of Whole Oaks and Forest Products. That's what Floyd worked.
Maybe next year. Maybe some year.
Yeah.
The park, though, we do have, uh, uh, yes, there was not enough money to finish it. That's what.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Really now, we do have a little bit more in the park budget at this point.
Okay.
Um, but, and you also notice we did gravel.
Oh, yeah.
Area out front.
Hmm.
Um, the volunteer from Portland and, uh, Mark put a planting area around the sign.
Nice.
So, um, that has actually filled, that actually has good soil in there now, and we put bark mulch over it, but the idea was we have a gift certificate left from Jerry's, and they were gonna get some appropriately drought resistant plants to put there to make it look nice in front of our sign, but.
Jerry's is so dangerous.
And that they're also going to put, um, move some of the rocks around to make sure that signs don't get.
Right, bashed.
Rolled over and, and, uh, but there is now good parking. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yucca plants, I could probably get you.
There you go. Connect connects also great too. Bear, bear, bear berry or whatever they call it.
Uh, which ones are connect in a?
Connect connects kind of the low lying, um, kind of waxy leaves or they, they grow as kind of a ground cover and they have bright. Yes, yeah, a nice bright red berries.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Box push.
Just, just cannot kill them in the drought. They're just about as drought resistant and as you can get, they direct sun, they love direct sun.
We should focus on drought resistant plants.
Yes, that's what I told Mark. I said, please do not get plants that are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it is not gonna get watered.
Yeah, I think there was also like, uh, there was the cost factor and then also just there was.
This was the sign.
There was, yeah, with the sign, there was like no agreement as to like.
The design.
Yeah, basically, i- it would cost a lot more, but probably looked nicer to have it actually carved.
It would be nice to have a carved.
I can go down there with my.
But we had talked about painting it and then maybe later on you could, you could, uh, you know, sand it off and and do a carving later and.
Oh, she's, uh, commenting again?
And maybe a local, maybe a local business willing to help.
Well, and also maybe, you know, I know that Floyd put a lot of his own time in, in.
What, what about getting the high school?
Stuff into, finishing up that building.
Soon that they could do a project.
Maybe also if you're doing a sign, you can name it his honor or something.
Ideas along.
Yeah, we've talked about that too.
Was to get forest to cut out and actually apply it like a three D, have on standoffs off the wood. That way you're not carving it.
Like the Corvallis Airport sign.
The Corvallis Airport sign.
Right.
Um, which they felt would be very cost effective and would work really well for a sign for, for, for what we were after.
Yeah.
Um, it would also be something that if something went wrong, like someone vandalized, it would be easier to fix.
You can actually act like that.
And you could backlight it. You could do a lot of things. That, 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 they suggested that too, is backlight.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, we should pursue that.
So that might be a lot less cost because all you would need is a three D router and just about everyone in the world has a three D router uh, that could carve signs that big. I, I, I don't have that big, but I do have a three D router. It's there. It's just technology has made it so you can do that. So that, that would be, I think at this point, not four years ago, but today.
Metal fabricator like in, not in town, but like, uh, just nearby, the person that did the, uh, the silos, uh,
oh.[1724.13]
carved a little sign.
Maybe the high school.
They, they have like a metal fabricator, it has a water jet.
Weren't the signs down there locally too?
The welcome signs? They were now gentlemen on, on a junction city.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, as a matter of fact, he rebuilt the one on the north end when it got run, hit by a car.
But yeah, I mean, if we're, if, if it's not a done deal, I mean, there's also.
We've always tried to get the wood shop and the metal shop and the high school involved, but unfortunately, we don't see a lot of enthusiasm.
Well, maybe next year.
I think there are more options available today than there were and as Counselor Cuthbertson mentioned, you might get a local business. Which would help them promote.
Their business.
Their business.
Right.
And we could certainly thank them and.
Yeah, they could put a placard on the back.
Give them a lot of recognition.
Yeah, it could be on our website, you know, thanks to the.
Thanks there, we could send things out, we can have appreciation things, all sorts of stuff can be done by the city to help promote our businesses.
They can put a placard on the back, so if anyone's close up to it, they could look and see who made the sign.
This, this is, this was made by, and then you betcha, that's exactly what you're after.
Cool.
Help promote.
What's that?
Brian Green, Brian, Brian.
Oh, yeah.
What's, would, would, would crestman?
He has.
So there you go.
Come on up to the mic.
Okay, we can't hear you, you gotta come to the mic.
Oh. Yeah, I'll turn to my car and you can yell.
Use your indoor, no, I'm just kidding, use your, use your outdoor voice.
It's just for the.
So.
Library when all this is done.
S B C C I A.
So right now, we own the library, but it has a, basically the title has an easement or. Yeah, it has a, a codicil. Yeah, the title basically says, the city owns it, but it must be utilized, it must be a library for forever and all time.
No, it'll still be, and because of its character, it'll still be a non-tax.
Still a library, so.
It's nonprofit?
Yeah.
It, yeah, it'll still be, it'll be non-tax.
You already do.
They, they, Benton County.
I would hope so, but Corvallis, who collects all the Benton County tax.
They'll use that to pay for services here.
Yes, not wish to park with their money.
No, I don't think so.
Direct services to the building.
Yeah, currently, or I know that the way that it's been is just they provide the librarians and the, and the services there within and the books. But not any, not any of the other operating costs of any of the library buildings as far as the um, from those library funds that go into the service. Yeah, the, the.
Services are taxes.
Services are taxes.
When you see the taxes, I, everyone in, everyone in Benton County, regardless of where you live, gets the same tax. The taxes go to Benton County, which passes immediately on to the city Corvallis, which then manages those tax dollars, the way they see fit.
Yeah, and currently ours and also I think Philomath and.
Alsey.
Alsey have similar deals where they basically are paying for, you know, maintaining their building and stuff for uh.
Yeah, you're paying your Benton County tax and you're paying the city tax to maintain it.
That's how it's like. That's how it's been for the last ten years, since it, you know. Oh, no, and that's what we're trying to.
System's been run for, yeah, ever since I've been up here.
Right. And, and that's what we're trying to, you know, but also there's a cost to get now, you know, like, we signed the agreement, we agreed to the terms of all the things, so there, no, but as a city, we agreed to it and so, you know. Yeah.
Right.
So.
I just have, I, I have one more thing to say. So there's the Monroe Light Parade, it's on Saturday at seven o'clock. Now, there's also the Monroe Holiday Shopping Event, it's happening all day before, leading up to